Okay, this is the June 1st, 2021 meeting of the Sherburne Planning Board. The meeting is on Zoom. And I think you all know the rules for Zoom. If you have any problems or are not recognized when you want to be recognized, please feel free to unmute and talk, or turn on your video and wave. So we are starting the meeting, calling the meeting to order at 7:06, 7:07 PM. And the meeting is now open. We'll start by reviewing the agenda. And adding any items that were not on the printed agenda. We've had one suggestion already that we add a discussion of the new in-person or Zoom guidelines for town boards and committees. So that we can add under current planning board business. Are there any other additions? Okay, hearing none, let's get started with the minutes. I have done my revisions as best I could on the minutes that were set around. Very good minutes as usual, really complete. Let's take them in order. May 4th. Before we show the minutes on the screen, does anyone have any corrections or additions to the May 4th minutes?
None here.
If not, I won't bother to show it on the screen to save time. Let's just take a vote on acceptance of the minutes of May 4th.
I move to approve the planning board minutes of May 4th, 2021, as written.
John, can I have a second?
Yeah, second.
Okay, all in favor? Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. The minutes are accepted. So the minutes of May 18th are now open to comment. Does anyone have revisions on the minutes of May 18th? Hearing none, I'll take a motion for approving the minutes.
Move to approve the planning board minutes of May 18th, 2021, as written.
Okay, thank you. And how about a second?
Actually, well, procedurally, I guess, I just noted this. I did make us, I had a couple of small comments on them.
Well, let's look at them then. Sure, we have them right, so.
Well, it's been moved, I guess.
Yeah, but then it's open for discussion. So this is the time to discuss it, as long as we're not rewriting them.
Okay. Well, so, let's see, in the...
I'll show my screen.
Yeah. They're pretty minor, but I just thought it maybe, I don't know, when I made some comments.
Yeah, no, we always want to get it right, so let's do it.
Yeah, so on the top of the second page, zoning articles, flame board members praised Marion Neutra and Gino Carlucci's presentations.
Top of the second page.
Yeah, the topics are bolded, zoning articles for town meeting.
Oh, right, I see.
And I think you, Marion, both you and Gino presented it, and I think we praised both presentations.
Absolutely.
So that was something. And then the next paragraph, or two paragraphs, public hearing 11 Farm Road. In the second paragraph, there was a typo, Mr. Mula, this last sentence, the second paragraph.
Marion, are these the right, is this the right version? I'm just checking, because I thought you had edited that sentence about praise the presentations.
No, I didn't. I should have, but I just skimmed over it.
It's just, it just needs a...
It needs a period after a mister?
Period after mula, after mister. And then, and then at the end of that sentence, I just thought it might read better. Say that the historic research didn't reveal property ownership of the stone wall.
Oh, right, okay.
Marion, just so you're aware, this is not the version I have with your markups in it.
Oh.
It's not that different, and none of the things that John are saying will impact it, but the version that you last sent to me and Gino, your comments are not in what I'm looking at on the screen.
Actually, Gino accepted the comments, I believe, and then sent out a clean copy with no track changes in it. Is that right, Gino?
Yes, I did.
The version I have with your comments, so for example, even in the next sentence there, Ms. Neutra stated that you wrote "at the last hearing." It was just like grammatical things, but the comments that you sent to me, I do not see in the version that you're sharing right now.
Should we, is it easier if we just have Steph share hers?
Yep, I can share mine.
Sure. I mean, I made some comments that Gino didn't accept, because they were not great comments.
Oh, if that's...
I don't think so.
If that's the case, if Gino didn't accept them, then that's fine. But comments I got back from you, Marion, are not in what I'm looking at on your screen.
Well, let's look at your version then, Steph, because I may not be showing the right version.
Well, the version that I made comments on, don't say "at" the last hearing, it just says "stated that last hearing included."
So maybe the wrong version was sent out inadvertently, but I have the one.
May I make a suggestion? If there's a discrepancy with the minutes, how about if we not vote on these, kick it out to the next meeting? Because if not, it's going to be very confusing.
Well, yeah, I agree with you, Chris, but let's just make sure that we're all...
John, does this look like the version that you were?
So I just noted that this wasn't in it, this wasn't in it, and then I was just sort of checking and saw that this wasn't in it.
Yeah, I must have sent the wrong version.
Yeah.
Because I certainly did not not accept all of Marion's comments.
Well, I'm okay.
But these issues are still here, and I'll fix them.
We can read them live or follow Chris's suggestion. Either way is fine with me. I only had like two more comments.
What would you like, Brian?
Yeah, these are my comments. So as long as we're here. Well, I want to know if the board was able to review this section, this version at some point, so that they're working from...
Yeah.
It looks like mostly grammatical, not anything substantive.
Yeah, it was pretty much grammar or just...
Yeah, nothing's material yet.
Except, right, if, oh, go ahead, yeah, go ahead.
That was just from the... Yeah, nothing that would change. Well, I'll leave that to you guys.
I had a small comment too, whatever, if now is the time.
Oh, yeah, go for it, Elizabeth.
Well, I know John had some other, I don't know if he wanted to finish, John.
Sure.
So here's Mr. Mula.
Yeah, yeah. So on page two, public hearing 11 Farm Road. Yeah. Let's see. In the second paragraph, so it's sort of, that's of that. I just was clarifying. Didn't reveal property ownership of the stone wall. And then in the next paragraph, see, on the east. So the existing permitted driveway on the east side of the house. So that it's just clear which...
Yeah, yeah, that was confusing, so it's good that you did that.
And then on the next paragraph, she noted that the property owner in the middle, she knows the property owner will likely be obliged, or I thought was maybe obliged.
Ah, yeah, that's better, because we really were not passing punishment.
Right. And then I'm looking at your edits. And I think... Yeah, so I'm looking at your edits, and I think your edits are better than, I had a couple more, but I think yours are better, so. I'm done.
Okay. I was just going to say that the second to last sentence in this section where it says the owners plan to apply for a driveway permit and provide a proposal for modifications, it's a little, it's on the next page, Steph.
Oh, thanks.
Um, yeah, it's right there, the second to last, yeah. I just thought, I wondered if we might want to put a little bit more detail after modifications, since this was a big point of emphasis, as in terms of next steps, like what modifications to the driveway, to the stone wall, which is, I think, what we were talking about.
It's a good point, Elizabeth, but I think they were a little vague about the modifications. So, yeah, sure, what they're going to come back with.
They were talking about like wood fences and stuff, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was my question, was that intentionally open?
It wasn't. I think what I had intended to say was up here, was to repeat what I said up here, which was to respond to the planning board's proposal.
Yeah, actually, I like the way it's written, because I think the lawyer was trying to not commit to anything until he had a chance to talk to the, with his clients.
Right, so this was the way it was written up here, hopefully you guys can see that. And I think I had intended, when I wrote these words, I had intended to come back and copy that language, but it didn't happen when I wrote up the minutes. So we can change it. Instead of provide a proposal, we can say respond to the planning board's proposal.
I like it the way it is, myself.
It's fine, I just wanted to ask as a point of clarification.
Yeah.
Right, yeah, that's good. Thanks. Meadowbrook Acres, open and closed, and I think that was
Okay.
Pretty much everything.
All right, Gino, I'll send these to you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Steph, thanks, Gino.
Well, are we comfortable voting?
We have a motion. Do we need to rescind it and redo it, or is, I don't...
Or just vote no, or just vote no and create a new motion?
Well, one is, yeah, there was a motion, and we're having a discussion. I think normally you have the second then discussion, but...
I wonder if it shouldn't be rescinded if it has not been seconded?
Or just, we can just say no one seconded it, so it dies.
Well, yeah, if it hasn't been seconded, it doesn't go anywhere.
Okay, died a natural death. So can I hear a new motion?
Chris?
I move to approve the planning board minutes of May 18th, 2021, as amended.
And second?
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor, John?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Will?
Aye.
Eddie May?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, the motion passes, the minutes are accepted, May 18th. Okay, we have no hearings tonight. Current planning board business, we're kind of scraping the barrel this week, there really wasn't much business. The ZBA hearings wound up, but first let's take them in order. So Gino proposed, and I agree, that I give an update on the Sudbury Aqueduct Trail. On May 20th, I believe, we had a, May 21st, actually, a group of us did a site visit to see if there are possible ways that the Sudbury Aqueduct Trail from Coolidge Street to the Natick Town Line could be opened for public use. And we recruited, we tried to recruit a number of people, the ones who did show up were myself, John Lautenheimer.
David Lautzenheiser.
David Lautzenheiser, sorry, I'll get it one of these days. David Lautzenheiser, who is a representative from MAPC, who's really focused on regional trails and connections. There was Martin Kessel, the head of Open Space for Natick. The Kurt, I forget his last name, the manager of the golf course. And several other people were invited, but couldn't make it. But I figured we had someone from MAPC, from Natick, from Sherburne, and the owner of the golf course. So we decided to go ahead. Then I invited Seth Malloy from Open Space Committee in Sherburne, just to have a second pair of eyes from Sherburne, because he's very familiar with the trails and connections. So we started at Laurel Farm and walked the aqueduct through the golf course, looking for a way to get through the golf course without getting hit by golf balls. I should also say in, for background, that I did have a long conversation with Alex Douse, the owner of the property, before this happened, to get a feeling for his objections. And he did affirm that the, according to this special permit by which the Douse's orchards were able to lease the land to the golf course, the public does have access to the aqueduct. So it's actually legal for the public to walk on the aqueduct all the way through the golf course. However, it, Mr. Douse pointed out that it's really not safe. He said, you know, it crosses a fairway, but also a long stretch goes along a fairway, and you're exposed to golf balls for a good way of the course. Mr. Douse also was really concerned about his liability. He knew that if you're not invited on the land, that the owner is not liable for your accidents, but he was still worried about ultimate liability, which most landowners are. Mr. Douse pointed out that he's against the idea of going through the golf course by any route, because the special permit was specific for golf course use and didn't include trail use. And he is not willing to renegotiate the lease agreement with the golf course or renegotiate the special permit with the town. So basically, he was quite clearly against it. And he pointed out that the MWRA, who does have authority over the whole aqueduct route through Sherburne, does not have authority once you get off the aqueduct trail. So we would absolutely need buy-in from Alex Douse and from the golf course. So with that background, we took a walk down the aqueduct trail with the manager of the golf course. And there were people playing golf, and I have to say, none of us felt very safe. And Kurt, the manager of the golf course, said, oh, this is a really quiet time when people are playing, especially when the high school teams are there, golf balls are flying everywhere. Said it's really not safe. He wouldn't take his kids on that route, but he would wear a hard hat himself. He was uncomfortable himself walking that route that we walked that day. So we were all pretty well convinced that it's not a safe, not safe to walk on the aqueduct. But what about off the aqueduct? I want to just share my screen, if I may, to explain where we went and why. Excuse me just for a second while I pull it up here.
Marion, can you please clarify, I think I missed this, that you said the special, the town's special permit public access?
The special permit that the planning board awarded to the Douses to be able to lease it for a golf course does not allow public, does allow public access on the aqueduct? Yes, it does.
But the lease agreement between the Douses and the golf course does not include trails?
That's right.
Okay.
Trails off the golf course. They can't outlaw the trail on the golf course, because that was part of the special permit. But the question was, can you leave the aqueduct and do a detour, basically? Can you see this now?
Yes.
Yeah, so here's Coolidge Street, North Main Route 27, this is Kendall. And I just marked with, the arrows show the aqueduct route across the town. On this walk, we were only concerned with the part of the aqueduct from Coolidge Street to the Natick line. And this property that straddles the aqueduct here is owned by the Douses. So the aqueduct goes right through the middle of their property. Incidentally, we'll come back to this, but you'll recall that this property that kind of curls around from Coolidge Street to Coolidge Street is what's now the affordable housing based on development and the EA development by Pulte curls around here. So, but the aqueduct doesn't impinge that property, it goes right past it. And there is access to the aqueduct from Meadowbrook Road right here. And we were concerned about finding a way to, for the aqueduct, partly because for the use of the town, but also because of these new developments that have no place to walk. This would give them access to a trail that they could at least take down to the athletic fields and maybe into Natick and onward. So that was the motivation from the Sherburne side. Is that, is that clear?
Yeah, I think it's probably good to point out, to make it be clear that the aqueduct in Sherburne is owned by MWRA.
Oh, yes, in fact, thank you, John, that's my next slide. I can just get rid of all those little pictures, go to the next slide.
So the special permit is, the Douse has a special permit?
Yes.
It's not the town has a special, but Douse has a special permit to allow him to lease it to?
That's exactly right. Yeah, I must have misspoke, sorry. Anyway.
Marion?
Yeah.
Where in the golf course does the aqueduct run?
I'll show you in just a moment.
Okay, okay.
We're getting to that. This is the aqueduct map that is really not accurate. In fact, and David Lautzenheiser confirmed that the MWA has control of the aqueduct all the way through Sherburne. This is the zoning map, it kind of shows what I already told you about the Douse's land straddling the aqueduct. So here we are, Chris, this is what you need. Here's the aqueduct going across. And oh, that's funny, I've lost part of this, that's weird. Some of this kind of cut out, interesting, I've lost some lines on this one. That is strange. Anyway.
Um, I know that course very well, that's deadly. About two or three crossings of fairways. Is there, is there any way you could have the trail go off the aqueduct onto, I'm sorry?
That's what we're trying to propose.
Okay.
And this map was to show you the alternative routes that we were going to look at on the sidewalk. Down here, we're at Laurel Farm. And this is, the blue is the aqueduct, but actually, this line, which kind of got lost, it showed up the last time I showed this slide, this is weird. But anyway, one option that I think John had thought of, that I thought was really good, was to go off the aqueduct here, if you can see my arrow, and get onto the golf cart path. And we figured that if they're on the golf cart path, they can then get on golf cart path all the way through the golf course and all the way, all the way through. So that was one option that we looked at. Another option that the Natick town opens, the town, I think she's the Concom official, suggested was that we come down the aqueduct and go through these woods and go through woods all the way to get back to the aqueduct. But it turns out these woods are wetlands, they're just full of wetlands, so you really can't. And Alex Douse said, why don't you somehow get, go through the Peters Hill Conservation Land? And here is Peters Hill up here, and get on the the power line right of way and go down the power lines to Rockwood Street, and then down Rockwood to town land where you can get over to the aqueduct. So those are the options that we looked at. And it turns out that according to Kurt and according to our walk, this cart path, this golf cart path is not safe either. You're exposed to a lot of flying balls as it goes along the fairways. So we decided to walk Alex Douse's suggested route, and from Gray Road on Meadowbrook, we went through, without permission, I must admit, we went up that road that the new developments that the Trask actually made to get up to their well area up here on the hill. They made a regular Jeep road that's even wider than a Jeep road up to here to get to the wells. And the idea is that this is going to be open space once that land is developed. And one could then go on that same road, which actually goes all the way up to the power lines. So we walked that road, and it was really quite an easy walk. It's a very gradual, easy walk up this road. And you get to the power lines, there's a Jeep road under the power lines that's very easy to walk that then goes, actually, it goes off the power lines and down to Rockwood on this property that is also town property. So the whole group, including David Lautzenheiser, who had been campaigning for the aqueduct itself, said it really liked the route going over Peters Hill much better, it was much more comfortable. They thought it was pleasant, and they weren't worried about golf balls. So the consensus from that day was that, oh, that's weird, the purple is lost from this one too. That is strange. Anyway, the consensus was that if we can negotiate with the, with Pulte, who's developing the EA development, actually, I think this might be Pulte land all the way, because it goes back to the open space area that's of the Coolidge Crossing development. If we can negotiate crossing this land behind the developments. If we can negotiate crossing this land behind the developments. Um, onto the power line right away, which is here. It very soon goes back onto conservation land and down to Rockwell. And then uh, we walked down Rockville, Rockwell. And split up to explore routes back to the athletic field. And the guys found a very easy route along public land here, right down to Laurel Farm. And you cross the, our athletic fields and you're back on the aqueduct. So this is the trail that we decided was the best.
Uh, that last bit is kind of steep, isn't it?
Uh, right here, it's a little bit steep. I mean, it's easy to walk. I mean, right, right here, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah. It's easy to walk. It's definitely not ADA compliant. So that's the downside of this one. That's the downside of getting off the, the level aqueduct route. And in fact, none, none of this would be ADA compliant. So we can forget about ADA access on that road. But anyway, that's where we left it and um. I, in an email that I just sent today, I asked David not to include this alternate route in his. Uh, regional. Map because we have not negotiated this and we won't be negotiating it for a while. Yet until everything is settled on those two developments.
So it's unfortunate that it's not ADA compliant, this idea, but the idea of then somehow. Linking it through Laurel Fields, that back section, maybe there is a, a compromise. If we got the permission from Pulte, there would be a compromise to uh, someone. Who wanted to access the trails and needed ADA compliance to pull into Laurel Fields. And be able to access it from where it levels out there and then jump on the aqueduct.
Oh, yes, there definitely is access here. Um, you would have to uh, modify these access points a bit. To make them ADA compliant because it is steep to get up to the aqueduct. But uh, that could be done with a ramp or whatever.
Zigzag.
Yeah, uh, yeah. Let's switch back.
I'm, I'm, I've been trying not to make this comment, but actually when I play golf, the safest place is the fairway.
I was gonna say maybe behind you.
And I think I, yeah, this one last slide just showed the wetland constraints of the route going around the other way. So we had to dismiss that altogether. Anyway, so that's what, that's what happened on the sidewalk. And I, I thought it was a good resolution. Uh, I couldn't see a way around Alex's uh, objections and Alex Dowes' objections. Uh, I just uh, don't think we're gonna get around that. Maybe someday, but. Not, not anytime soon. And I, I was rather surprised actually that this route was as pleasant as it was. Uh, and everybody else on the walk thought, yeah, this is great. We should do it this way. They were totally okay with getting off the golf course. So, so that's that.
Well, very clever.
Well, you know, it was actually Alex Dowes' idea. And I was thinking going over Peters Hill would be much too steep. But uh, if we can go across these lands, it's not very steep. So. Anyway. That's that. Thanks for listening. Okay. Updates on.
What would the next step be on that? What's this? I mean.
The next step is to negotiate uh, public access. Across the, the two new developments. And we're not nearly there yet. Uh, the Pulte development is the main thing. I'm not sure that road actually even goes on to. The Coolidge Crossing development. At this point. We could look and see.
Um.
I don't think it does.
Well, we still may have a negotiating chip. Even though they said the sidewalk will never happen, this might be a good alternative. To something like that.
There you go, Chris. Yes, that's a good point. Uh, in any case, we do have uh, leverage. On the EA development because they do require a special permit. And uh, that could be a condition of the permit. As of now, they plan to let the residents of the developments use that ru- that route, but. Uh, it's not open to the public officially. We want to make sure that it is.
And then as far as the MWRA owning the portion, the rest of the portion of the aqueduct that would be used. Is that a separate negotiation that still needs to happen?
Oh.
And are they receptive?
Thank you, thank you. Uh, David Lotzen, Lotzenheiser agreed to help us do the MWRA permit. And uh, both he and others that were consulting on it. Uh, advised us to get the permit for the whole town, right, right up front and right away. And that it's not hard to do and that's another next step that we could do right away, just to get, have that permit in place. And then in the future, if we can negotiate. The aqueduct on the other side of Coolidge to Framingham, we'd at least have the MWRA. Permit in hand. So. Uh, that's, that's another next step. I think the negotiation with Pulte is gonna have to wait until. They're in negotiation with us, you know, when they're getting their definitive plan. Do you have anything to add to that, Gina? Anything I said?
Uh, well, oddly, uh, they, they do have a definitive subdivision plan before us. We could. Make that, make that happen, make a commitment now, not necessarily the exact route, but perhaps the. Uh, just the commitment that they, they would provide a public access through, through that property. Since that property is part of the definitive subdivision plan.
That's a good point. Actually, it would have to be that particular route, the route though. That's the only route that's a good even walk. From uh, Meadowbrook up to the power lines is. Because if you get closer to where the buildings of Coolidge Crossing are gonna be, it drops off. And um, it would have to pretty much be the road that's already there.
Yeah, so what we would have to worry about is the conflicts with the, where the buildings are gonna go.
EA buildings.
The EA buildings.
The EA buildings, yeah. As far as I could see on the map, there, there isn't any conflict, but we have to take a closer look.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Okay, moving on. Updates on ongoing and potential development projects. The uh, the Lebarzki projects, the Pines and Apple Hill Estates. ZBA public hearings are now over. They were closed last week. And uh, they did get our. Letter regarding stormwater and I kind of supplemented it by making comments at the meeting about. The interaction of stormwater and septic. Uh, but we'll see what happens. I think next week they, they're going to continue. Uh, but it'll be only a hearing and not a public here. It'll be a deliberation, not a public hearing. And for Coolidge Crossing. Uh. Now, these meetings are, are all sort of mixing together in my mind. Uh, Gina, can you remind us what happened at the last Coolidge Crossing meeting?
Yes, that, that hearing was also closed and the deliberations on that one begin tomorrow night with ZBA.
That's right. Oh, tomorrow night, that's right.
June second.
Right, so it's good to sort of listen in on those, even though we're not uh, providing input. I'm hoping that especially on the, on the uh, North Main and Hunting Lane properties that the ZBA. You know, uh. Takes seriously the fact that. The uh, controls at the state are not perfect. And um, I'm concerned, I, the, uh, the developers. Peer reviewer did point out that the well. Issues and septic issues are going to be controlled by the state and they have a very strict. Uh, strict standards for that. So we shouldn't worry about well and septic. But on the other hand, I'm not sure it's the same. Uh, department in the state. That will be concerned with stormwater. My, my fear is that the stormwater people look only at stormwater with their stormwater blinkers on. Like the peer reviewer did. Um, and that the septic and well people look only at their stuff with their blinkers on. And if it's not all put together. Uh, it could end up, it going badly. So I, maybe Gina, you could tell us the Stormwater Authority at the state level. Does that have any relation to the?
No, because the permitting is done at, the permitting for that is done at the local level. However, I do think that the, the DEP division that looks, that, that reviews. Groundwater discharge permits for the leaching facility will take into account. Um, how stormwater will affect the groundwater level when they, when they uh. If they build that, were to build that plant.
I, I have more confidence in that than I do in the inverse. Do you think the uh. What is it? Is it a DCR or that, what, what department would be reviewing the stormwater plan?
Well, oh. The depart- I don't know the name of it, but the department that, that issues groundwater discharge permits.
Okay. I'm worried that they may not look at the, the input of the septic discharge.
Yeah, uh, right, that, well, yes, that's what they do. That's the point. The groundwater discharge is the leaching. Uh, the leaching dis- discharge from the wastewater treatment plant.
Oh, but what about the stormwater?
They would not review the stormwater. Um. The, the stormwater system other than how, this is just my understanding. I don't know really specifics, but. Uh, I, I believe they would take into account. Uh, how stormwater affects the groundwater level when the, so that. To, in order to discharge into the ground, additional water into the ground. You have to know what's going there now with, through stormwater. So I think they would take that into account, but not the whole stormwater. System. They wouldn't have anything to do with that. I don't think.
So anyway, we'll see. We tried. We'll see how that plays out. And then um, for Coolidge Crossing. Um. That has been relatively easygoing, I think, for the developer. There were no other major concerns about, there still is some confusion as to. What role, if any, the uh, Conservation Commission has and when they ask for an NOI. I've never understood that because I didn't think they needed an NOI if you're doing a comprehensive permit, but. Anyway.
You, you do because the um, this, the Wetlands Protection Act is still in effect. And they have to follow the state, they have, Conservation Commission is the only entity that issues. Um, orders of conditions, so they have to review it. But using the state standards, not local.
Right, okay. Okay, that's good. All right. Um. Other business.
I, I think um, other business, I think we should talk about uh, our open, how we're gonna meet.
And then. Could, could you remind us, Gina, what the new rules are going to be exactly? Do, do you have that on top of your head?
Well, I think it's, as of right now. The, the suspension of the open meeting law rules. Uh, and effective June fifteenth. The governor has filed legislation to extend that to September first. And I think it, my observation is that there's a lot of support for doing that, that it's kind of too quick to, to just suddenly go back. Um, but the legislature would have to act before June fifteenth. For them, for those to be extended. Otherwise, we have to meet on June fifteenth in person. And the complicating factor on that one is that. We don't have an election that day. And so we can't meet in town hall. We can't meet in town hall anyway because it's not, it's not accessible right now. Uh, we could possibly meet at the police station if it's, if it's uh, available. And I was going to suggest that um, tomorrow I book it. If it's available, just in ca- in case we do have to meet there in person. Uh, and then the election. Does the, voting hours in Sherburne end at seven or eight?
Um, I forget.
Anybody know? Anyway, if it's eight, which I think it is. Um, we would overlap an hour with uh, with the election, though we did schedule the hearing for eight. So the eleven farm row hearing would not begin until eight, but there could be still some conflict with parking and. And such if it's a big turnout.
You know, that is really complicated. Because uh, you know, in a hearing, you often need to uh, show some. Projection or you need to be looking at files. It's just not good. Um, I mean, putting on my COVID nineteen team hat for a moment. I think it's absolute madness. To start going back to meetings in town halls. We don't yet know what the percentage of vaccination is in the town. In the country, it's about. Inching up to fifty percent. It's higher in the town. I think it might be sixty or seventy percent. But that means, you know, thirty percent of the people are still not vaccinated. None of the kids under twelve are vaccinated. It's just madness. Total ridiculousness. And so I, I'm, I have faith that um. The legislature will manage to act by June fifteenth because they should be concerned themselves. Uh, about, you know, the well-being of everyone who has to be in those meetings, especially uh, indoors. You know, it ain't over till it's over and it's, it's not over yet. So anyway, that's my two cents. We'll see what happens.
And, and, and by the way, the rationale for extending to September first is also. To allow time to figure out what the permanent solution will be. Not, not just the continuation of the, the, the way it's been.
There is a ground swell for continuing to be able to meet on Zoom because the public participation has turned out to be better.
Absolutely.
So, yeah.
I would say there's no way I would be here if it wasn't for Zoom. Is hundred percent the why, reason I'm able to participate. I mean, I will come. I'll be there, guys, in person, I promise, but, you know. I, I think there's, for, for people who have kids and working, I think it's just an amazing thing to be able to participate in town. Government, but I also understand the benefit of in-person for what it's worth.
Yeah, there are benefits. Sometimes even, you know, after this is, after the, that pan- pandemic is over, there will be times when. It really needs to be in person, but. Uh, for a lot of meetings, you know, we, I think, function. Pretty well on Zoom, once we're all used to it, which we are. Anyway, that's yet to be seen. I, I don't know when we'll have word on that. So can we make any plan for June fifteenth? It's only two weeks away. We can meet outside. If the weather is, is nice as it is right now. Uh, but then how do you post such a meeting and, yeah.
Yeah, we kind of have to post it. According to the current rules, I think, and then change it if we can.
Yeah. Yeah, you're right. So uh, we'll post it in person, but we need a place. And in police station, if we get there first.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, and it's, since it is election day, that's kind of in our favor because probably nobody else is gonna meet that. That night. So uh, it probably is available. So I'll book it just to play it safe and then. Uh, we can figure out if we can continue with Zoom or whatever, whatever we have to do.
Okay, okay, great.
Gina, if we do go back to in-person meetings. Can you describe the um. The online participation. the online participation option that Sherburne has and the circumstances under which it would be used? It was a, it was alluded to in Gina's email, but I just didn't understand it.
Uh, I, yeah, I believe, well, for, for board members, you can, one, you can, there has to be an in-person quorum. But other members beyond the quorum could participate remotely. For hearings, they can miss one and review, well, that, that's regardless of, of, of remote participation. I guess if, if, if you're participating remotely, you haven't missed a hearing. But you can miss a hearing completely and review the materials and still vote and participate in future hearings, but you can only miss one. That's the current, that's the existing rules.
Um, so if we're forced to go back to in-person, that means the board itself uh, will have to be in-person or the majority in-person. But what about the public? Is, you, you think there will be an option ever for the public to be able to participate remotely, even when the regular meeting's in-person?
Gonna have. I think so, I think so. Uh, at least at a minimum, I think that whatever the legislature decides on a permanent solution, I think that will be part of it. Because it has been so popular and participation has increased so much. Um, I can't imagine, it would be like um, reducing the ability to participate if they don't allow it. Uh, so I, I think it will go, go that way, but.
But you have to have the audio visual technology available, which we really only have in one room.
Right, and, and eve- even for presentations of materials, it's so much clearer and easier to see on, on the, on the computer screen than if, even if you have it on, on a big screen or TV in the room, people aren't close enough and you can't, you can't really read it and uh, whereas it's much clearer on, on the computer.
Yeah. Okay, well, let's keep our fingers crossed and hope the legislature acts before the 15th. I kind of think they will because uh, you know, uh, towns all over the state are kind of waiting on this.
Right, and all, all they have to do is, I mean, they don't have to negotiate anything. They can just, at least for the September 1st thing, they can say everything's continued since September 1st. I would know, I would think that's all they need to do, but we'll see.
Okay, well, uh, we'll be watching and I guess you'll, you'll let us know if you get word, Gina.
I will.
We do. Um, the uh, another comment that wasn't on the agenda, it's not really an agenda item. I just wanted to comment that it's so exciting to see that sidewalk going up on North Main in front of Abbey Road. And I have to say that stone wall over which we deliberated hours and hours looks better than it ever did. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I concur. I um, really have to commend Sean and Addie May and the whole Department of Public Works. The, how, and Gina, I know you really were the person behind the whole thing, but get, that, getting uh, the mortar and all that kind of stuff handled and the the, the, you know, the, the final design and everything, it's just been a real pleasure. I also think the traffic control has been fin, I know it's been very difficult, but I really like the restriping of the road and I really admire the way it's being handled.
Yeah, and so, yeah, thanks to D P W, Addie May, pass our thanks along to Sean.
I will, that was definitely all Sean.
Yeah, and, and Gina had so much to do with, you know, raising the money and uh, coordinating the whole thing. So seriously, huge thanks to Gina, big account.
Yeah, but uh, the tough part was the details and managing the contractor and getting all that stuff to apply for the grant and that stuff was the easy part.
Oh, well, wouldn't have happened without you, that's for sure.
What was the easy part? I didn't know there was an easy part.
And I must.
Comparatively, I should say.
Addie May shared a, a comment from a member of the public on the, the lack of sidewalks in Sherburne. And I wanted to thank Addie May for your response. I thought it was just perfect. Uh, she referred the, the person to uh, the Complete Streets Priority Plan and then to the Master Plan, and it was just a really great response. So thanks for that. We'll have to save that. I'm sure we can use it again and again.
Mary Ann, I have a question if we have a moment.
Yes.
Just because we're not pressed tonight for time, I wondered if um, I could just pick your brains for a second on, you all have so much knowledge of, of planning board, um, I don't know, just topics and ta- town planning and laws and um, I'm, I'm eager to learn and I've learned so much being in these meetings and reading the materials that have been shared with me, but I wondered if you just had any advice on how, how to improve. I mean, I, I'd like to get to a place where I can actually contribute and I'm totally not there. And I just wondered if those of you who entered into this realm yourselves, um, had advice.
And I'll jump in and say I, I was totally right there with you when I first got on board and um, I think having a printed copy of the um, rules and regs as well as a printed copy of the zoning bylaws, bylaws are, is helpful. And I don't know, Gina, if you have any extra printed copies that we can get to Elizabeth because I can look at something on her screen and I, I use the, the computer for searching bylaws. A lot of times when I'm trying to quickly look for a, a specific word, but if I have it printed out and I kind of start skimming through, it starts to, some of it connects more. So um, it's a, you know, a process. It didn't, it doesn't happen overnight, but it makes more sense the more we do this.
Thanks.
Yeah, I would say the same thing, Elizabeth. I mean, seven and a half years ago when I came on Planning Board, I knew less than you do now. I mean, way less. Uh, and you know, Gina was super helpful. John was tremendously helpful. And just uh, being there and, you know, being in the middle of it. But I also, I, I agree with Addie May, having a paper copy sounds old-fashioned, but it really helped me. I couldn't have done it with nothing but an online copy of these things. The problem is that the paper copies are now out of date. But you can get a feeling from most of it. Uh, you know, maybe we could help you uh, identify the pieces that have been changed as we go along.
Well, the ones online are up to date, correct? Or the?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can print them.
Until this year's town meeting.
Right.
Um, there, there's um, nor, in normal years, there's a annual uh, meeting that uh, is for zoning board and planning board. And they have concurrent talks and things like that. Uh, Gina, there, there's that paper handout book, booklet on uh, you know, congratulations, you're a new member of the planning board.
That's. I'll send it to Elizabeth.
If you've got it.
Might have some stuff that would help you too, Elizabeth. Probably Gina has everything, but.
Well, Elizabeth, I have to say, I'm kind of surprised you're bringing it now because your quiz is next meeting.
Well, I will not be there, no kidding.
Also, Elizabeth, there, there is, uh, there's something called the Citizens Planner Training Collaborative that offer courses, like one-night courses, one or two-hour classes on different aspects of things that planning board and zoning boards uh, address.
Yeah, that is C T P C or whatever it is, C P T C. Um, I get notices from them kind of off and on regularly because they go to planning board members, but maybe uh, if anybody has one of those notices handy, if you could forward it to Elizabeth, they could get on their mailing list. And then whenever a course comes up, you'll get the notice.
Actually, I, I've never gotten one of those. Can you share that with me too, if anyone gets those?
Yeah. Do you have that website?
I'm looking actually, but I think they also are the ones that post this annual meeting.
They are, yes.
Yeah.
Usually in Worcester.
Yeah.
Worcester in March.
And when things open up, once things open up, that's, that's a good thing to do if you can take a half a day or whatever it takes to go to one of those. You can really learn a lot.
Thank you, that was great, thank you.
But now that they're online, even better. You don't have to go to Worcester.
Yeah, I, I'll send the, I'll send the link out.
Oh, thanks, John.
I'll get it right here.
Yeah, there's one on June 14th, um, Working with 40B.
Yep, and uh, June 7th about master plans, how to create a master plan.
Haha.
So the um, I mean, I guess both of those are useful if you've never done them and if you're not familiar with 40B, but um, maybe this is why I kind of tuned them out because I feel like there's, I wish there was more zoning-related training, um.
Those annual meetings I usually have, it's sort of 50/50. Um, they're not 40B oriented, really. I mean, they're, but they have, they have, uh, the annual meeting, I think, had a real diverse range of things.
Special permits and variances and subdivisions, writing defensible decisions is, is uh, you know, usually a session.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm glad you asked that, Elizabeth, and I'm glad you're that interested.
Thank you for your help. That was really helpful discussion.
There's also uh, M A P C meetings and, and um, and there's the, the regional sort of subdivisions that are really good to attend. You get to hobnob with other people from other towns doing the same thing.
Right, I mean, the, the regional meeting, the Southwest Area Planning Group, the swap. Uh, Addie May and I have gone to, and John, you've gone to some too. Some of them were good. They uh, I found them a little bit um, less of a networking thing lately. Uh, I think they're good for the town planner, for Gina, you know, networking with other town planners. But the last couple of times I've gone, it was only the town planners. And no one from, you know, a citizen on planning board, which is more our perspective. But there have been some useful things there and you could go to a swap meeting, you know, the next time I know Addie May and I and Gina always get the notices and Gina usually goes and I try to go. Um, but we could give you that link and you're welcome to attend.
Those are interesting just to hear what other towns are, the issues other towns are dealing with. It's, it's usually very different from what we're. But it, it's still interesting and it's interesting to think of, um, you know, especially then when you start driving through some of those other towns and you hear what issues they're facing and then you drive to and you kind of go, oh, that's what they're, I don't know, but like anything, it's all a, you're light years ahead of things already, but, and I guess I never feel stupid to ask a question. Um, everyone here has been a huge resource and now I've asked many questions.
Well, we, we've all been there. We all started from scratch or somewhere. Me, for me, it was totally from scratch, Elizabeth, so you can do it.
Thank you.
Well, this time I thought you knew what you were doing.
Yeah, right. Had you fooled. Okay.
Well, by the way, there's also uh, uh, online training that's actually required, o- o- open meeting law and conflict of interest. Those are two things that you should do anyway and um, they're good sort of reminders.
Yeah, I don't know, Elizabeth, if uh, the Selectment's Office or the Town Administrator has sent you those.
I think I did those, yeah. I did conflict of interest. Um, I don't know if I did open meeting law. I don't know if it was.
Yeah, that, that comes to the town clerk.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right. Okay. Uh, do we have any reports on meetings with other boards? That we haven't covered? Okay, Town Planner Report, Gina.
Um, I really don't have anything, anything to report.
How was vacation?
It was pretty good. The weather was nice.
Except for the weekend.
I know we interrupted your vacation.
Yeah, well, that was the week before last, this, this weekend. Uh, obviously, the weather was not, not good at all.
Yeah. Missed you a duck.
Okay, well, uh, I think that's it for tonight then. I think I can take a motion to adjourn.
Um, just have we confirmed our, Gina's gonna post an in-person meeting and, and hopefully it'll get, we'll have time to modify the location.
Is there a way to post it for um, the, if, if it's available at the police station to post it as being at the police station or, or provided that um, this, the state has not, you know, pre- first prefer, first choice is Zoom, but if the state has not modified the June 15th deadline, then it'll be at X location so that we've got both places there?
That, that's exactly how I would do it with, with the contingency, right.
We don't want all our fans showing up at the police station if we're not there. Okay. Uh, that's it. Uh, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Okay, all in favor. Uh, Addie May.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Will.
Aye.
And I'm an aye. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.